Call to order the work session for Wilsonville City Council on Monday, March 6th at 5:22 PM. And we'll start with a review of agenda and items on consent. Does anyone have any comments?
Or questions specifically, I think Scott Simonton from the Transit Department is here. And Catherine Smith is here if you have any questions about the Finance or Fleet Department tonight.
We are going to talk about these items.
No, but I have staff come just in case you have questions so that we don't when we get to the regular meeting.
Okay.
Because it's consent, you just adopt it as a council.
So anyone have any questions about the items on consent? Okay, seeing none, are there any counselor concerns? No. Okay, we'll begin our pre-council work session and start with Mr. Polly and Mr. Weigand. Okay, we'll begin our pre-council work session and start with Mr. Polly and Mr. Weigle regarding our transportation system plan amendments for Frog Pond East and South.
Thank you Mayor, for the record Dan Polly, Planning Manager. And I will turn most of his presentation over to our transportation consultants Jenna Bogart and Scott Manzler from DKS Associates. But myself and Zach Weigle are here as well to answer any of your questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Jenna.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're talking through the revisions to the city's transportation system plan related to the Frog Pond East and South master plan. Let's see, just click it. There we go. In the next few slides, we'll talk about why a TSP amendment is needed, and then cover the bulk of the chapters of the TSP, so Chapters 3 and 5, where the revisions will mainly be. And then we'll open it up for any questions. So the city's Transportation System Plan, TSP, is a long-term policy and planning document that contains the city's transportation improvement projects. And those projects are important to be in the TSP because it allows them to be competitive for federal, state, and regional funding. And this TSP amendment was required as part of the Frog Pond East and South master plan. Since it was adopted in 2013, the TSP has had four, three or four amendments to incorporate transportation projects from other area plans like Basalt Creek Concept Plan and the Town Center Plan. And so this is just similar to those where we're pulling in those projects from the master plan into the TSP so they can be eligible for funding. I will state that the amendment will only include changes related to Frog Pond East and South master plan. We didn't make any other changes to the TSP related to other area plans, or we didn't try to go through and clean up and remove projects, things like that. We just wanted to focus on getting those projects into the TSP from the master plan. So Chapter 3 of your TSP is the city's standards. And so the three figures that we mainly focused edits on were Figure 3-1, Figure 3-2, and Figure 3-5. The figure you're looking at there on the slide is Figure 3-2, the functional classification. These figures, we generally updated the city limit boundary, the UGB boundary line work. Some of these figures haven't been revised in the last 10 years or last three years even, so the line work needed to be updated for UGB and city limits. The Collector Street Network in Figure 3-2 was updated to include those future Collector Streets in the east and south neighborhood. So those are the dash lines and the figure there. Figure 3-5 isn't shown on the slide, but the bicycle route figure contains existing and future planned bicycle routes. And so that figure was updated to include the bicycle routes from the master plan. There's, I think, bicycle lanes in the east neighborhood that connect to multi-use paths. So those are now included on that figure. Figure 3-14 is a new figure to the TSP. It is showing the cross-section standards for arterials and collectors and local streets within the east and south planning area. And so these are cross-sections that you've seen before. They're pulled directly from the master plan. And they show the cross-section standards that are slightly different from the standard arterial collectors that are in your TSP today. And so that's why we included them as separate standards for the master planning area, for the Frog Pond master planning area. So you have Stafford Road arterial, which runs north-south and separates the west and east neighborhood. The Advanced Road Collector, which runs east-west and separates the east neighborhood from the south neighborhood. And then you've got 60th Avenue, north and south of Advanced Road. And then the local street cross-section, south of the school. And the Brisbane Main Street, which is the street that will run through the kind of commercial center in the east neighborhood. Chapter 5 has the city's TSP projects. So this is really the bulk of the amendments. And the city's projects are split into two categories. There's high-priority projects and additional planned projects. And as the kind of naming indicates, the high-priority projects are at the top of the city's priority. And so all of the projects from the master plan were put on the high-priority project list. And so that's the figure that we're looking at here. I've highlighted in purple those projects that were added as from the master plan. So RE 12C is the Collector Streets in the east neighborhood. RE 17 shows the Main Street extension on Brisbane Street through the kind of commercial area. SI 12, 13, and 14 are the single-lane roundabouts. The two up on Stafford Road at Colley and Brisbane, and then the single-lane roundabout on Advanced Road and 60th Avenue. And then the last slide here, we've got just a continuation of these projects. We've got BW 21, which is the Advanced Road mid-block pedestrian crossing near the Future Park. So as the area develops, there'll be a demand for Peds to want to access that Future Park there in the south neighborhood. And so we'll want to accommodate for the safe pedestrian crossings in that area. BW 22 and 23 are both projects for rectangular rapid flashing beacons. 22 would be the one on Advanced Road, and BW 23 would be one up on Stafford Road near Frog Pond Lane. And then SR 05 is a project for enhanced school crossing near the middle school, Meridian Creek Middle School. So that could include things like signage and high-res, high-visibility striping and other just safety improvements for school-aged children. So that's the end of those projects and kind of the preview of the figures that will be in the TSP. So open to any questions you might have.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your report. That was helpful. But I'm still new, so I'm still learning about the projects. So on Stafford Road, will the city be acquiring right-of-way to expand it? Because it looked like in some illustrations that I saw that there's going to be a lot wider.
I don't believe there's a need to purchase.
And then the follow-up question is, on Stafford Road, right now, the speeds are pretty high, but it looks like you're going to have a couple of traffic circles. So what's the anticipated speed limit?
Okay. So first, I'm Scott Manzler with DKS, and I'll help Jenna answer these questions. The right-of-way along Stafford, I believe there will be, and Zach, there will be some right-of-way required for that. So Zach will maybe respond to that one. On the traffic circles, typically, the speeds in that inner circle are around 20 miles per hour. So. Yeah, I mean, right now, there's certain speeds, but as once the urbanization happens and the development happens, we'll go out and revisit and look at dropping the speeds. But we'll have to wait for the improvements to happen, and then we'll do a speed study and look at trying to reduce the speeds from what's out there today. You probably have a better idea of that right-of-way.
Yeah, Zach Weigle, City Engineer. Yeah, so there will be a need to purchase some right-of-way on the west side of Stafford, but likely on the east side, it would happen as development happens, they would dedicate the needed right-of-way. As far as the speed, we would be looking at, we would be trying to aim for 30, 30 mile an hour posted speed in the future through that section. That's what we're going through right now on Beckman Road design.
Any other? Councillor Barry? I mean, Councillor Dunwell?
Hello, Mayor.
So many names.
I know, so many names. Could you take me to the last slide prior to questions? So I know you speak to the mid-block pedestrian crossing near the Future Park, which is also somewhat near the school, correct? Is that going to be a, I don't know if you'd call it a protected crossing with a flash where they can stop the traffic, or is it just a crosswalk?
The intent for the park access would be a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, so it would be a push-button activated.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Councillor President O'Carroll.
Actually, I kind of had a similar question, follow-up on that, on the same topic. On this map, because looking at the packet, well, I'm looking at page 46 of our packet. I believe it's page 115 of your document, but regardless, it's the same roads that's showing on the map we were looking at here. Could you identify which of those intersections are the flashing beacon? I was also curious about Intersection 2, which is, it's the pedestrian crossing with the median. Is that a flashing beacon? Because I know that's kind of funky, or I don't know. You know, it's just a different design than some of the other ones. And I'm wondering how that crossing will be handled.
Which is Intersection 2?
Yeah.
Is it on Stafford Road?
Let me, yeah, it's Stafford Road. You know what? It's the Frog Pond one. So it's where we see the little pedestrian symbol on this map, close to the label BW 23.
Yeah, that is intended to be an RFB as well, so that push button.
Okay. So that's the same than number 2, or this BW 23 is flashing beacon. And then down below on my map, we have Crossing 4, 5, and 6, which appear to be clustered around maybe SR 05, BW 21, BW 22. Which one of those are the flashing beacons?
So the intent would be for 5, which is kind of the mid-block location to the park. That one would be a rectangular flashing beacon. I would say, we don't know for sure number 4 because it's really probably tied to safe routes, but you could have one at Location 4 as well. But I wouldn't say it's a for-sure thing. It would probably require some coordination with the school and how they want to operate that crossing once development occurs on the opposite side.
Okay. And then 6 is a roundabout, so that one would not be. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. Typically, what we do at roundabouts is we'll install the conduits and have it all ready to go if you want to put an RFB at some point.
Interesting.
But typically, with the speed and being able to have the raised medians, you typically do not need them. But when we design them, we always install the conduit so they're ready to go if you want to install them.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Thanks.
And I had a question about, I think I know the answer to it, but looking at the cross-sections, basically on all of them where we see the trees, can you just speak to how the urban forestry plan will be used to guide the types of trees? Do we have that? Are we too early to talk about that?
I think, Mayor, that's more of a planning question, so maybe Dan could talk about that?
So the most simple level is just that we're using the urban forestry plan to designate the type of trees. In past master plans, like in Vilbo, we went through and listed in quite detail which trees. But purposely in this master plan, we didn't actually list specific tree species in the master plan so that we can use the Urban Forestry Management Plan to select those trees based on the type of street, and also adapt as climate and things change over time, and use the best type of tree that's available.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Dunwell?
So many times. And it will be a significant change, and there will be an adjustment for drivers, especially during times of heavy traffic on I-5. Is there any plan to at least temporarily place speed bumps or anything to governor the speed at all?
The addition of the roundabouts will definitely be, will act as traffic calming devices to slow the speeds. So that will be the, and then also typically, when we're going from a rural section to an urban, we'll have also speed feedback signs just to let people know what their speeds are. And also the medians, and we're going to design it in a way, and if you look at the cross-sections, we're really creating a narrow road that's going to discourage speeding on those roads. But typically, when you talk about speed humps, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue is not excited about any type of horizontal, vertical deflection on the road because of emergency response times. So especially Stafford Road, all these roads are key emergency response routes. We wouldn't want to, we want to use other design components like trees and medians to try and slow the traffic in roundabouts versus putting speed humps on the facility.
There is, it is possible to pass a car on the single lane, particularly on Stafford. It looks very narrow in the image.
Yeah, you will not be able to pass.
You will not be able to pass another car?
Correct.
There's a breakdown lane?
Breakdown.
Are you worried about, like, emergency vehicles being able to get by?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
Oh, right. Yeah, so one of the things in these cross-sections is you have a raised median when you don't have accesses, but there'll also be spaces where there'll be breaks in the medians for left turns, for cars to get out of the way. Also, for the bicycle facilities, cars will be able to get out of the way for the emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I.
Councillor President Lynn, or Councillor Linville? See her hand.
If we could go back one slide, please. I just have a question that is, maybe back one more. Nope. No, I guess we need to go forward, forward, forward. There we go. So my question is, I'm a little confused about the cross on Stafford. Is the cross at Frog Pond Lane, or is it at Brisbane? Is the roundabout at Brisbane?
So the pedestrian crossing with the RFB is at Frog Pond Lane?
At Frog Pond Lane?
Yes.
Okay.
And the roundabout is at Brisbane?
So that's BW 23?
Correct.
And that outside of crossing Beckman is the only crossing Frog Pond West across Stafford Road, is that correct?
That would be the only rectangular rapid flashing beacon, but we will have roundabouts at Brisbane and Colley that will have pedestrian crossings. So you will be able to cross at the roundabouts. There'll be pedestrian medians.
Oh, there will, okay.
Yes. Yeah. And if pedestrians are having a hard time getting from west to east, again, you can install RFBs at roundabouts as well. So those could be added if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Linville. Councillor President O'Carroll, did you have a question or comment?
I did. I think, oh.
I think it is just a quick reminder for me. On Table 1 of the information in the packet, so this is where we're looking at the level of service for all of that table. You're familiar with that one. Okay. So on the two-way stop-controlled intersections, part of that table, there's two different level of service readings, right? And then that pattern follows for Table 2, 3, where there's these two different readings. And then when we get to Table 5, there's one level. And so can you remind me why we have these two different ones and then we don't?
Jenny, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe for two-way stop, there's two levels of service because it's providing you two bits of information. You have the stop control that's on the side street. So you're trying to pull out, and it's the delay for you to get out from the minor street out to the major street. But we also measure the delay for the left turn. So if you're turning left, say, off Wilsonville Road, you're not at a stopped approach, but you still acquire delay to turn left from the major street from the minor. So that's why for a two-way stop, we have two different levels of service. When you see one, it's usually an all-way stop, or it's a signalized intersection. And that is based on just the average delay per vehicle over the entire intersection.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks for the reminder. Yes, I appreciate it. Okay.
Any other questions or feedback? Councillor Dunwell, go ahead.
Very quickly, it's just more of a clarification for my own, myself. Is Stafford Road technically considered an arterial road?
Yes, it is.
It is. So is the treatment of it and how you manage the growth of it or any of the traffic controls different for an arterial?
Versus comparing it to a collector?
Yeah, versus a collector.
Yes, yeah. I mean, there's spacing typically. I mean, on an arterial, you have more traffic. And so you want fewer intersections compared to a collector. You typically have higher speeds and higher volumes. And so you're kind of looking at the east-west connections and how the volume is acquired. And that's why, as we looked at it, we actually did some simulation to look, okay, how does the signal? the signal at Wilsonville Road and Beckman advance operate with a signal? And then we have our roundabouts. We looked at the queues and how those operate to make sure that we're not installing too many intersections and making sure that we're providing good east-west connectivity between east and west Frog Pond.
So the reason I ask this is, from my own personal experience, living in Wilsonville and in a neighborhood with a lot of roundabouts, there are still a lot of people out there that who do not know how roundabouts work and who have, who actually has right-of-way. So is, what is the process of, I mean, is it sign that you yield or, I've seen accidents, I've seen almost accidents, and this is not going into what I would consider an arterial road?
Right. Yeah, and I guess something to, typically when you install roundabouts, the first six months or so, you actually see an increase in crashes. But they're property damage only, they're not injury-related crashes. And so you do see an increase in crashes for a short period until people get more used to driving them. But when you compare it to a signal, you have a lot more fatal and severe crashes at signals because they're higher speed. And when somebody runs a red light, you have a 45 mile per hour crash with a 35 mile per hour. So it's much, whereas a roundabout, you're reducing those speeds. Usually the average speeds in a roundabout are 15 to 20 miles per hour. And so when you do have a collision, you're really eliminating a lot of the injury-related collisions, especially the severe and fatal crashes.
So just again, from my own experience, are these roundabouts, are they grassy with trees or are they just a flat roundabout?
At this point, it's, we're just, we know there's going to be a roundabout there. There's a lot of different designs that you can do. Some designs will have a grassy, high, median. Nowadays, there's some that they're actually just making it amountable. A lot of it has to do with the right-of-way and the cost and how they balance it. But I wouldn't say, I'd say at this point, it's really hard to really know what the design is going to be until...
I would like to recommend, as you're doing this, to consider making it more difficult for people to cut through it.
Yeah.
Because I see a lot of that right now. If there's particularly one on Graham's Ferry, that people will just drive right over, so they don't have to reduce their speed at all.
They use the apron, kind of what's the truck apron to go through it faster.
There's a tree or there's bushes or something like that.
Some of that has to do also that we interface with the farming community.
Yes.
And I remember specifically, when I first got here, there was a lot of conversations about the roundabout on Villableau.
Villableau Drive.
Villableau Drive.
Yep.
And the right-to-farm language in the state statute says that you have to be able to allow farm vehicles to get through urban areas.
Oh, interesting.
So we did have to modify the roundabout.
It wasn't cheap.
I bet it wasn't.
So thanks for bringing that up. I do have a question, though. I've seen semis a couple times using kind of part of that, but usually not, it almost looks like they went the wrong way and they have to figure out how to get out of there. But I haven't seen, is it like automobiles you've seen?
Yeah, trucks.
Trucks, okay.
Automobiles and trucks.
And the truck apron is really intended for them, but it's raised for them to go, but they have to go very slow. But we do, we still need to accommodate trucks, and that's the way to slow speeds for both motor vehicles and trucks. But that apron, when you have the grass area, that's not intended for trucks, but when you do have that concrete apron area, it's really intended for larger vehicles to use that.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
And maybe somebody who really likes to replace their shock absorbers and get new vehicles often, but, so the plantings might discourage that.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. It looks like we've covered it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's exciting plans. So that brings us to the prohibited camping code update project with our city attorney, Ms. Gail Hinman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Amanda Gail Hinman, city attorney. Let me pull up my presentation here real quick. All right. So this is a follow-up to our discussion on February 23 in the work session and during the regular meeting on updates to the prohibited camping code. So we're going to start with a brief background and overview of the city project. I'm going to go over the prior work session discussion, and in particular, the three policy questions that we discussed at that time, and then we're going to go over the remaining policy questions, followed by next steps. So again, as a quick background, this whole project is stemming from some federal court cases and state legislation. First is Martin v. Boise out of the Ninth Circuit, and essentially what Martin v. Boise said was, you can't outright prohibit camping on public property and public rights-of-way if you don't have enough shelter beds for your unhoused population, but you can have reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. That case law followed through to Blake v. Grants Pass out of the Oregon Federal District Court, that in reaffirming that Martin v. Boise decision also further clarified that when it talks about reasonable time, place, and manner regulations, people need to have the ability to stay warm and dry when they're sleeping on public property. That decision was affirmed by the Ninth Circuit in Johnson v. Grants Pass. And while that circuit, while that federal case law was going on, the state of Oregon legislature essentially codified the Martin v. Boise decision in House Bill 3115. And what House Bill 3115 says essentially is, if you are a local jurisdiction that regulates camping, then you must have objectively reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. And that bill goes into effect on July 1, 2023, hence why we're discussing this project. So the city project, our goals really are to ensure compliance with the state laws and also the federal case laws, that we continue to reflect the city values, and that we are constantly providing additional education and outreach to the community to not only explain the underpinnings of this project, but also what we can and can't do and what we are going to end up doing. So we formed an interdepartmental team that consists of individuals from our Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Library, Code Enforcement Administration, our Police Department. We all meet together to go over not only the council feedback, but the things from a logistics and practical standpoint, you know, what we think for a code recommendation could be. And then finally, I just really quickly want to touch on what we can and can't do. Right now, Wilsonville does not have enough shelter beds for our unhoused population, and so we cannot outright ban camping. But like I said, the state legislation and the case law says we can have objectively reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. So that's really what we're looking at here is, what are those time, place, and manner regulations that we're going to implement? So from the prior work session, there were really three policy questions that we covered. The first one was, and we're going to touch a little bit more on policy question one, but that was around hours for camping, the allowed hours for camping. And the consensus really was that the council was interested in looking at specific hours rather than a 24 or 12-hour time period, that there'd be specific hours that people could camp. The second policy question was on a private camping program, and council, we discussed that there's interest in that from some community members, but since that is not a requirement of the state legislation or the federal case law, that that is something that we can discuss at a later time, but that it's not off the table for a discussion. The final policy question was about looking at vehicle camping versus tent camping. And I will say, as we're working through, we're starting to work through the code language, there are going to be times where we talk about them separately, but the consensus from council was that there shouldn't be, they shouldn't be treated differently from a regulatory standpoint. So to the extent that one can do a certain type of camping that the other can as well. So with that, I'm going to jump right into the policy question number one. This is a continuation of the discussion around the hours. And specifically, one of the things that we will talk about is the hour range you want to potentially implement. And so I pulled some examples, the 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., that's what you see in Seaside. It's one of the four jurisdictions that has updated its code in light of House Bill 3115. The other jurisdictions did 24-hour periods. So Seaside is one that did an hour range, 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. is consistent with our current code regulating vehicles on city streets. So we have certain regulations about certain vehicles being around residences, and they are only allowed from between 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So either we would stick with that, or there's the potential we need to go adjust that code provision if we're going to do a different timeframe. And then 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., that's when our parks are closed. So if you're looking for other areas for people, or you're looking for areas for people to go to outside of those hours, that 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So we've got, we've got actually quite a good chunk of time to talk about this, so I'm going to stop at each policy question and like to get some initial feedback. So before we get to whether keeping parks closed at night, I'd like first to hear some discussion around the hour range.
I took the time to sit through our last council work session and a meeting to revisit everything that we discussed. And particularly on the hour range, one of the things that I was thinking about was that in the summertime, there are events, and it doesn't get dark here until 10:00 p.m. So 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. does not work for me, because there would still be families that would be in the parks. 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., that's great that that's in agreement, but with the consistent, with the current code. But what I'd really like to see is 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So you're giving individuals enough time to actually, you know, leave in the morning. I think if we were to go 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., it's a little, it's a little tight, and I would be concerned that there would be more issues with enforcement.
Thank you. Council President Ockervall?
Yes, I'm thinking about enforcement, because there's so many facets and angles and, you know, viewpoints we can look at this from. I wonder if we have information from our police department or the service providers too, on when they are able to respond to something? When can they, like, is there a shift change that we need to be aware of so it's not, you know, in direct alignment with suddenly, nobody can come out, you know, to address whatever the needs may be on that particular day? So I guess the time that we set might need to take into consideration, when do we have staff and people to provide the support to actually enforce and, you know, give whatever assistance is needed?
I can do some more research on that as well.
And that'll all be part of the dialogue that we have internally as well?
Yes.
Because enforcement is a huge aspect of this. So if you're, if you're going to say that you have to leave by 6:00 a.m., who's going to be here to enforce that?
Exactly.
And are we going to pull officers off the street that are doing, you know, community safety stuff and enforcing other more important things?
Well, that's...
Important considerations.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking about. Or, you know, in our last discussion about this, we had a lot of talk about, okay, how do we make that handoff happen to different service providers that can give support and provide other, you know, off-ramps or alternatives to their current situation? And if those providers aren't able to be on the scene to have those conversations, then I think it's a missed opportunity to change the current situation, I guess, for that individual.
Did you have another comment?
I do just have a follow-up to Council Ockervall, because I kept going back to enforcement and the availability of resources, but also conflict with what may actually be happening at the city, in the city at the same time, again, like with the evening hours. But also in the morning hours, because if you've got schools opening and you've got the traffic and that, you know, that then moves into the, where will it be allowed? You know, if it's not allowed anywhere near schools, that becomes less of an issue. If it's nowhere near arterial roads, that becomes less of an issue. So I think all of this, as we start to weave it together of what makes sense, everything, it sounds like you all are taking all of that into consideration and really making sure you're answering those questions by bringing all the different team members together.
Yeah, one of the things as an exciting preview for what's to come, is we are doing some thought mapping. Our Public Works Department, in particular, facilities are doing some thought mapping of our city facilities and what different regulations could look like. So that will be coming at your March 20 meeting when we start talking about the code, because whatever comes out of that needs to be put into the code. So they're doing some really, really great work with some mapping that you'll be able to see at the March 20 meeting.
Thank you. I, do you want to comment?
Not really. I mean, those are all good thoughts that they said. The enforcement part of being able to have personnel available, I mean, what's the point of having any rules if we can't enforce them? And we want, we want them to be, the people that are camping to be comfortable, but we want the other general public to feel comfortable too using our parks. So that's one of my concerns.
Great. So I just wanted to clarify, or just kind of go back a little bit. So in doing our, fulfilling our obligation to comply with the state law, we are working on that ordinance so that we have a consistent way in our city to know, so that everyone will know the time, place, and manner of when you can camp. And there, we don't, we don't, so when we find somebody who is experiencing homelessness, whether they are on foot, looking for a place to sleep, or they're in a vehicle, then it would be the same response in working with that person or that family in helping them access services. And so while we're working on this ordinance, I just spoke with, I just wanted to mention something for us to be thinking about, that I hope we can do alongside this, is develop a set of values for our community that help us guide where, you know, what we want, what we want and hope for people who are in this situation. Because there are certain people who, certain situations where somebody's going to be out of compliance and they need to be informed of. Here is, when we have identified the time and place, here is the place where Wilsonville has designated for people who don't have shelter to sleep, whether it is in their car or in, or they don't have a car. And so I think picturing that, that we will have, you know, first, start with where that place is to sleep, it's not necessarily that we wouldn't have enough space for them, because starting out, I hope we've identified some spaces, and we do have that. And so then what we're doing here is, oh, and by the way, I had a really great conversation today with Adam Brown, with Clackamas County Coordinating Housing Authority. I had a question for him that I was looking through the county website and just wanting to validate some of the things we looked at or talked about at our meeting also. And I was really glad to hear him say that the county wants to continue expanding their ability to, what he describes as distribute the resources throughout the county, is as they described last week, last meeting, the county, thanks to high-producing businesses that have gross receipts of $5 million and more and high-earning individuals in Wilsonville and all across Clackamas County, there is an additional $40 million per year coming to the county for wraparound services to address these things. And so, and that would, that continues, I believe it's a full 10-year period as the ballot measure described, and I think we're in year two right now, and they're making really good headway in establishing actual housing and all the different levels that we heard about. And so the missing link, I said, is, well, how do we get to the place that when we do talk to this person or this family who's homeless at this moment, how do we connect them with these services? And so I think that's something we can talk about later. And so when we hear about enforcement, I'm hoping that that's a rare thing, and the more frequent thing is connecting them with the navigation services that Clackamas County has and wants to work with us on. So with that in mind, but hearing what... So, with that in mind, but hearing what everyone else tonight has said about the, the hours.
Your Honor, I, I have some comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see Counsel Linville's hand with this. So, I guess you have to speak up, because there's not a little hand. So, please, please go ahead.
Well, I can try the little hand. I don't know that I have it. Well, I, I know, for me, this is, this is a difficult sequence to address, because I know that it, it addresses it as time, place, and manner. But for me, it's more difficult for me to, to come to closure on a time when I don't have a sense of place.
Right.
So, I think place would be, for me, a better place to start. And the issue about the parks is a very important consideration. I think about as, while I appreciate Counselor Dunwell's concerns and comments about time, I recognize that if we're talking about warm and dry, I mean, at least dry place to sleep, we're, we're looking at the majority of the time that we have in our community where it is wet, and it is dark early. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if we can, if we can switch the sequence of this. Right now, if I had to pick, I'd go with the 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, just simply because I think it's reasonable. But I don't, I think 8:00 PM might be a different answer, depending on what the location is. I'm opposed to allowing this to occur, you know, I like the idea of keeping the parks closed at night, and not allowing it enforced in areas, but I think we have to have some kind of a reasonable alternative, and that would help me decide on an hour range easier if I kind of knew what we were talking about.
If, if you want, I can jump to talking a little bit about location. Okay, I'm seeing head nods. Let me get, okay, zoom in here. Okay, so, what we did is we took, we looked at city facilities, mainly city buildings, that were not in a park, and public rights of way that were not in residentially zoned areas. So, the star, so, the roads, you can, you can see, those are roads that are in areas zoned, anything other than one of our different residential zones. The greens are the city buildings. The yellows are our schools, and the stars are daycare, childcare facilities. So, what we are talking about, looking at, if you, one of the things we're talking about is if you exclude parks and you exclude, you know, like, we were thinking, you probably don't want people in a parking lot near your treatment plants. So, if you take out the treatment plants, we're also thinking the smart parking lot is pretty small already, very tight. So, really, what we're looking at is City Hall, the community center, the community center and Public Works and the police, they're actually different parcels, so the lots, the parking lots are technically separate. So, City Hall, those parking lots there, the library parking lot, and then one other question is Town Center Park. So, if you close all the parks and the parking lots of the parks, that also closes the parking lot where our parks and recreation building is, which is in Town Center Park. So, the other, so, this is kind of what we're looking at as, not as places where people can go, but sort of the considerations based on the community feedback we got. I mean, the community feedback we got was not residential areas, not near schools. So, those are essentially the things we eliminated. One of the things that we're kind of thinking of with Town Center, because you have apartments all around the outside, is there may be a consideration of, other than certain city facilities, that Town Center loop is, and the internal roads are completely taken out as well. So, this is sort of what we're starting from, and then the thought maps that we're doing are for the parking lots at City Hall, Community Center, slash Public Works, and Library right now.
So, when you're describing thought mapping, that's what we're doing tonight, right?
So, you're, you're going to see an aerial of the City Hall parking lot.
Right.
And we're going to show you spaces where we think how we could lay out-
Where it could be possible, and then the council will decide where they think.
And we're also looking at the strip. So, we have property right across the street of, from City Hall that is ours. That vacant lot, part of it, most of it is Kaiser Permanente, but part of it is City of Wilsonville.
There's a long-
Yeah, so, we're also including that.
It's about, I think about 50 feet deep that way.
Yeah. So, we're also doing, we're also doing an exercise of that area as well.
Is that all a grassy area?
Yes.
So, the starred areas that look kind of pinky, orange, those are daycares?
Those are daycares, and then this is a Montessori school over here, but yes. Daycare or after, after-school childcare, any type of childcare that was identified through the state of Oregon.
So, I have a question about, if we talk about vehicles, obviously, they're not going to park on dirt, probably. The, the one, and we don't, we don't, we don't know the volume, and we also haven't yet learned all about the capacity of our partnership with Clackamas County, which has no waiting list and is growing in their capacity. So, I am not considering, I am not seeing a, there's any reason to believe, from what we know today, that we need to have a lot of different places around town. And I also heard Mayor Wheeler say at the recent mayor's meetings, how incredibly difficult it is to have people experiencing homelessness dispersed across a wide area. I think we've already covered that by closing the parks. This library seems, would be the last choice for me, because it's not only where, you know, it's very similar to a school in terms of children and families, and it's also right near housing. So, that would be actually something I would not support. And I think that the back, the far end of, of City Hall parking lot is, is something that has some, it looks, it looks like it would be a reasonable place for some vehicles. And then, we've talked about people in tents before. I'm not supporting planning for tents, so I won't be supporting planning for tents. So, then, I, I'm, I'm interested in planning for something else, and wanting to explore with Clackamas County a voucher program. So, just so they know, that's, that's where I'm coming from, a voucher that could partner up with motels and the navigation system that Clackamas County Housing Authority has, and any, any kind of bridge that we could, would need to provide. And we need more explanation, or exploration of that, but just wanted to make those comments.
Amanda, may I ask a question that is a little clarification on, on some of the mayor's thoughts?
Sure.
If we have designated spaces where we, and we define camping as however we're going to define it, and we have identified space and time and manner, can, do, do we have authority to force them to use the voucher to go, get out of town and, and go to alternative housing?
Well, and just to clarify, I was not talking about forcing to go out of town or any forcing, but go ahead with your question.
Well, I, I'm just wondering, when you say we're not planning for tents, if we don't have tents in our ordinance, I mean, if we have tents in our ordinance, then we have to have some place for them to be.
And I want Amanda to answer, of course, but I just want to clarify where I was coming from. Yes, we have to have some place for them to be. So, where, where could that be, besides sleeping on the ground in a tent, which we heard from Clackamas County is the place where somebody is the, is the most distant point from exiting and, and leaving the state of being homeless? So, that's why I'm not enthusiastic about encouraging people to either, to move into that status, or to help them stay in that status. I'm personally interested in things that help them, as Clackamas County says, move out of homelessness. And Clackamas County Housing Authority has so many options, and they are committed to expanding those and working with cities. So, then, if you didn't say tents, I guess what I was thinking is, and this still needs to be explored, would we have a, a building that, that had housing, it would have to be staffed, would it be a small building with beds? So, it'd be some beds. Would it be a designated use of a motel that, that has beds with a very direct connection to Clackamas County Housing Authority, where they're, they're talking to the people and helping them with their navigation services move on? Or would it be, you know, a sleeping, what they call a sleeping pod, or a micro-village that you see other places where it's, 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 again, it has to be staffed and managed? But I wasn't thinking, I'm, I hope that we can find ways to have, and I guess if you had, let's say you had 10 spaces with beds, and they were all managed, and there are 12 people that need to sleep, I think they do have to have a tent site, or some option, right?
Yes. Yeah, so, no jurisdiction that I know of has not allowed tents, has banned tents.
What if you try to have other options first?
So, that, yes, right, that is a different discussion, and what I would see, if, if you're saying, if what you're saying, Mayor, is we, we want to have alternatives available for individuals that we see in tents, that is a program that we could talk about setting up. That would not be in the prohibited camping code.
It'd be a program.
Yeah. So, to me, given, there is so much uncertainty around tents, and you see it in the federal case law about whether or not tents can be regulated, and given that we're in a rainy climate, I would really caution against just banning it. But if the direction from council is, we, we want to make sure that we have a program in place, particularly for individuals who are seeing either sleeping on the ground or sleeping in tents, that is direction that we can take and-
Well, I want to really be, I, if I said this, I did, I, that's not what I intended. I, I'm not saying ban tents, because that's probably, I'm not trying to get into a legal challenge. I find it to be an unkind way, and an unhelpful way to, to interact with people experiencing homelessness, is to encourage them to use a tent. I don't think that's helpful. I think there are other things that are more helpful. And so, if our values say that, that we are, above all, working to have successful and more humane options, and more hopeful options to people, that by the experts we learn, work much better for them to get on the exit ramp from homelessness, that's what I, I want to prefer, if that makes sense.
I agree. Can I, I agree in spirit with what the mayor says. Yeah, and I was really, I was really moved by the conversation that we had with Clackamas County in their presentation. The discussion that they had about, because I, I came in as quite a skeptic, just because I felt that there is a certain segment of the population that will, don't even want to be counted. They don't even want to be recognized. So, at first touch, they say, I don't need your help. Second touch, you say, let's go get a cup of coffee. Third touch, they might tell you more. So, I do believe that there are ways, there may always be a certain segment that really does want to be a traveler, and does not want to live by, you know, traditional societal rules of their own choice. I think that's a separate discussion. But for the camping itself, if we put in place time, and the, and an individual has a tent, and that's their choice, that they have a tent, they don't want the voucher, they don't want to go to Clackamas County, they want to put their tent up, can we say that that tent needs to be taken down and moved by whatever time period?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that is one of the things, as we're talking through, I also want to make sure I reiterate this when we talk about time, place, and manner, those are all in play at the same time. So, even if we talk about individuals being able to park at City Hall, that would be subject to a time regulation as well. That would be subject to the manner regulations that we're looking at as well. So, it would be, hey, you know, it's, let's say it's 7:00 AM, it's 7:00 AM, it's time, you know.
But since it's not a park, and we don't have closed hours for a parking lot, does the 72 hours apply?
The 72 hours would apply. So, if they decided they're not going to leave, you could, once this was adopted, you could cite them immediately, but to get them to leave, you have to post the 72-hour notice.
Even at a park?
Anywhere.
In a parking lot?
Anywhere.
Yeah.
Anywhere where it's not an emergent circumstance, yes.
Okay.
That's a due process right that they have, yes.
So, my, my preference in this discussion to just kind of move, I guess, move forward is, I, I would agree that, I mean, I've seen the library parking lot be full. I've had times when, when I haven't been able to find any place there. It would, I mean, we could designate within the code, in those areas, certain areas that no more than X number of, of campsites, for, for lack of a better word, whether it's a vehicle, or it's a tent, or it's whatever it is, what I lean to, or whatever people are, however we define that. We could say that it had to be in the far end, and no more than three or four in, in that particular area.
Yes, you can do that.
I, I think we could do that. And, and we could also designate, if it was in the City Hall parking lot area, we could designate no more than X number, and that it had to be in a certain location in the parking lot, and within these hours. And that they, they could set up at that time, and, and then they had to pick up and move and go someplace else. Could we, if we designated like three spots, so Community Center, City Hall, and then a very few number at the library, could we, could we require that they would have, they could not, in other words, they couldn't move, if there's three designated spots, they couldn't be in one there, and then move 10 feet or whatever, and get in the next one, and get in, and end up staying there for, you know, I mean, forever, by just moving around in the, I mean, we could designate that they could, they would have to move to another location.
Are you saying like from one night to the next night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could that be in that code?
It's not something I've seen before, so I, from a legal standpoint, I don't know if it would, if it would pass muster. It's something I'd have to think about, if we could regulate it like that. I mean, and again, I think this is getting back to the larger discussion that I'm hearing council have of, if we're seeing an individual who we're seeing kind of time and again, there needs to be the outreach that's done to connect, to try and connect them with service.
Well, if we are, as we heard from Clackamas County, we are part of Clackamas County, and we are welcome and included in the Built for Zero program. So, we're not, we have no less, basically, the Built for Zero program is about taking, you know, finding people's names, and I'm, I'm gonna, I- you know, finding people's names and I'm gonna, I watched the work session again and it is full of incredibly valuable information. I'd actually like to see it put on, on the interview with Clackamas County, maybe put on a landing page or some page about this workshop. Because in the Built for Zero program, which is funded by our taxpayers, again, with $40 million a year, they have the capacity and are building the capacity to come talk to people. And that's what Adam Brown told me today, is they're not forcing anyone to do anything by any means. That's not how they do it. They are designed to, they are social workers and talking to people about options, they don't all want to do it, but you can watch the thing again and see how they have had a very good rate of people. So I think it'd be, my hope, I can't predict the future, but it sounds unlikely that you'd have the same vehicle there for several weeks, moving from parking space to parking space. It's hard to imagine now because we're not using Built for Zero. We haven't seen this in action. Yeah.
You okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. So Councilor Linville, I hear what you're saying and I want to ask the mayor a question. Am I recalling correctly that Mayor Wheeler said that one of the issues that they had was that they had such a broad distribution of locations for campsites that it made it more difficult to enforce?
And that was, yes, that was a big thing, he said, they had, but it's, you know, far different than this. But they said they had hundreds of encampments. And so when you talk about your Built for Zero program, how are you going to hire enough people to go interact with them? And then we've also heard that a lot of congregating camping, as Ms. Guile Henman had found, if you had a large number of people in one place, that also makes it difficult. But here in Wilsonville, we are at a place where it is not a large number of people and we're, you know, we have a long way to go. But I think there's funding and interest in developing the social services side of it. I see Council President Ockerboll has a comment.
Thanks. I think, just drawing us back to this map that we're looking at, which, by the way, this is a very helpful visual for us, thank you. So if we're looking at the green dots and we're taking into consideration where the schools and the residential areas are and the daycare facility or childcare facilities are and things like that. I understand your comments about the water treatment plant and it also occurs to me that, well, water treatment is right by a park as well.
They share a parking lot.
Right, yeah. I've been in that smart parking lot where I took the very last parking space in that parking lot. I understand that is a tight parking lot. The parks admin, again, in a park. So really, we're talking of the City Hall, Public Works. I do want to put an asterisk by the community center because we have Creekside that is right by the community center. And so I would prefer us to maybe to keep that focus on the Public Works Police part of that area, I guess. It occurs to me that in some time, in the not-too-distant future, we will have our Public Works building and some of that coming and going might move to a different area. So perhaps there's opportunity there in the Public Works Police parking lot. And then we've had some discussion about the library and the library is of those three green dots. The library is the one that's closest to perhaps that childcare facility there and some of the children's activities. So to kind of like refocus back on those three dots, that's where I'm seeing potential with kind of a question mark maybe by the library or at least not using the library as our heavy possibility for space.
You could also look at these areas that you're talking about as, you know, Plan A, B, and C.
Right.
So you could say, first preference is, we want to be here. Second, if we have overflow, we would put them here. So that you're giving people, you're giving staff the options and the directions about what your first and second and third preference would be.
Yeah. The other thing that we are looking at, that the Public Works Department is looking at as they do this thought mapping, is the sanitation aspect of it all. And, you know, making sure that if we're talking about parking, allowing people to camp overnight in any of these locations, that we have the ability and the space to provide some type of sanitation services. So that will also impact if and where people could be located.
And by that, do you mean then that there would be like a porta potty set up in the corner of these parking lots or what does that mean?
I mean, yes, potentially, something like that.
Okay.
And which then you get into, you also want to make sure that you have some setback too from them as well. So yes, that's the kind of thing we're looking at.
In the thought mapping, which we're going to be doing as well, could, I'd like to find out more about what I've read on the, well, we heard about it from Clackamas County. They called it a pop-up shower and laundry that shows up places. And one of their agencies done, there was some publicity about that, it's a nonprofit. That's an idea, that that can come where they seem to have great success. Oh, you have? Okay.
Yes, Mayor, part of our process, once you identify the sites and the hours and all that, will be the logistics side of it. So sleeping pods, different levels of accommodation, showers, cleanliness, all that will be something because there's going to be a budget attached to that as well, so.
Yeah, this doesn't, nothing in prohibited camping ends the conversation. This is one component of a much larger conversation that must continue.
There's the statutory legal stuff that we have to do and then there's the day-to-day interaction stuff, getting people into supportive services and permanent housing, that's going to be an ongoing thing. And then just the budget to make sure that it's clean and safe.
And it does, I was just, again, really glad to hear that we don't have to think all this stuff up ourselves. Because Clackamas County Coordinating Housing Authority, I think what it is, CHA.
Coordinated Housing Access.
Access. Is, has a lot now and they're just continuing to develop it. So, well, so we talked about, Councilor Linville, we talked about the place and that was really helpful to come, to start, to come back to this. So now that we've kind of covered place, and Council President Ockerboll, do you have another point?
I do. Just because we haven't talked about sidewalks.
Okay.
But is that the reason that the teal roads are highlighted on the map?
The reason the teal, well, the reason the teal roads are highlighted on the map is because you do generally include in this discussion public rights of way. And these are area, the teal areas are the roadways that are not in or adjacent to a residentially zoned area.
Okay. I guess my preference would be if we're able to identify an area on the city parking lots or lots that we would not include sidewalks as a potential space. It seems like that would, again, be harder to get our arms around, you know, providing assistance and all of that sort of thing if sidewalks were.
I think it goes back to what the mayor said. It's like if you have dispersed, if your homeless population is dispersed throughout the whole city, it just makes it harder to get access to those services, identify their needs and have that ongoing conversation.
Exactly.
Yes, the main thing that we will need to be mindful of is because anything that's not on the road is areas where individuals who aren't sleeping in vehicles are sleeping. And so we just need to make sure that we have space to accommodate individuals who aren't sleeping in their vehicles. So if we have sufficient space in the, if we look at the property adjacent to City Hall that we're talking about, if we feel like there's sufficient space elsewhere, then I think that that is, can be reasonable.
And I think that's one of the advantages of the City Hall parking lot because after, well, unless there's a night meeting, of course, after 5:00 PM, I mean, you'll be able to accommodate people that are maybe sleeping in tents and you have a different, and then the parking lot would be open for people in vehicles regardless, right?
Yeah, so in this exercise, I apologize that it's not done yet, but it will be for the March 20th meeting, but they are, when we look at the parking lots, we are looking at it both from a perspective of vehicle camping and tent camping and also being mindful of you don't want conflict with that. So that's also being examined as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's something, it is definitely something that I think as we work through that exercise and we see what kind of space we really have, that'll help inform what we can do on the rights of way. So I think, you know, when you talk about vehicle camping, in all likelihood, people will probably still camp on the rights of way. So if we know that that's a likelihood, we should be talking about what does that look like from a manner perspective, a time and manner perspective as well then, so.
What do you mean? That they be on the right of way?
So, so if, right now, we know that there are individuals who are living in their cars who are parking on our city streets. And what we don't have right now, other than having an outright ban on camping, we have a rule that says your car can park for 72 hours in one location. So to sync up our camping regulations, what we really need to do is look at, okay, what's the time that somebody can be sleeping or living in their vehicle on a city road? And if they are, what are the parameters around that? So like one of the regulations that we would probably put in place that you see elsewhere is you can't have personal property outside of your vehicle. It's got to be all self-contained within your vehicle. You can't, if you, especially for RVs, that you can't be connecting to or dumping into our stormwater sewer, water, electrical, that kind of stuff. So those regulations, all those manner regulations, you still want to have those because in all likelihood, not everyone's going to end up in a city facility, a city parking lot or other city property.
Just a clarification question. If we have pods available, can we, can we only encourage individuals to go into a pod rather than a tent that they have? Or can we have that be a requirement?
That is a great question and I wish I had a very clear answer for you. I don't. Here's the two things that really come into play on that. If I was just looking at the Martin v. Boise decision, I'd say absolutely yes. If we have enough pods, yes, we can force them to go or else cite them and say, you're automatically violating our code. The two wrinkles are, one is that in the district court case, it talks about HUD-certified shelters. Are there enough HUD-certified shelter beds? Nowhere in the Ninth Circuit case law does it talk about that nuance. And so I don't know if you have something other than a HUD-certified shelter, is that okay? It might be. I mean, the Ninth Circuit didn't bite on that issue. The second thing is, one of the things that the state law says, the whole premise of the state law is to codify Martin v. Boise. But what the state law says is, if you regulate camping, you have to have time, objectively reasonable time, place, manner regulations. It does not say unless you have enough shelter beds. So the implication from the whole, from the whole statute is we're codifying Martin v. Boise that says if you have enough shelter beds, you're good to go. But the legislation doesn't actually say that. And so there is this additional wrinkle of, if you look at the legislative history, probably the implication is there, but the express words aren't there. So not to, I mean, I apologize, I don't have a better answer for you.
One thing that we, that you can hear in the Clackamas County section of the last work session was them describing that homelessness, which I think is a better word than houselessness, because somebody, I don't want to disparage somebody who is renting a room from somebody or they're renting an apartment and they don't have a house. I just feel like homelessness is more inclusive. But they said that homelessness is sleeping in a place not meant for human habitation. And I talked with Adam Brown about that today and, because I said, I was just talking about the vehicle camping and the, you know, what, how does that differ from somebody who is at this moment in a tent? Well, this person's in a vehicle. He said, in his opinion, which he is not the legal person, he's a social worker, and his objective, which he and his team are doing very well at, is helping people exit a state of where they only have options to sleep in a place not meant for human habitation. And so they're doing what I can see and I think we all saw was a very good job of helping people get into the housing that our taxpayers have paid for, many different types of housing. And so he said, he considered it to be a, an artificial distinction that a car is not meant for permanent occupancy. You know, you get moisture problems, the car breaks down, you know, that is not a car and even a recreational vehicle are not meant for permanent habitation. So in the social worker viewpoint, that isn't helping somebody or parents with children really have the best access to opportunities. And so from that standpoint, what I was discussing with him is, from his view and a social worker perspective, is that somebody who does not have access to a place to sleep that is meant for human habitation, they're the ones we want to help. And so, I don't think we're going to, I don't think, I can't imagine like trying to find all of them wherever they are, trying really hard to find all of them. But where somebody presents themselves in a way that can be noticed, I think Clackamas County wants to be our partner in helping them.
So do we have any more discussions about the map?
I do, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Berry.
Well, I want to say thank you so much for providing a map. I'm a really visual person and I appreciate maps and all the comments that we've had so far. I like the idea of consolidating and trying to manage one site. And then if we, if the numbers increase because people are migrating south from Portland or north from Salem and we need more spaces than doing a second site, but I really like the idea of starting with one. And my two, my first site would probably be the, let's see, west end of City Hall parking lot or over by the Public Works facility that we hope to demolish, but probably not the library just because we have too many families and children coming and going.
Thank you, Councilor Berry.
I'm just looking at.
Can I ask, right now, help me, help me remember, our library stays open until what time at night?
Eight?
Eight, yeah, 8:00 PM.
6:00 PM on Sundays.
And they open at 10:00?
Okay. And they open at 10:00?
Correct.
1:00 on Sundays.
Yeah. I think, I think if we're, if we're, are you trying to get us to an A, B, and C kind of priority or eliminate something?
I think you'll have more time for that discussion when we come back with the thought mapping. But I, I was simply suggesting that if you have, like you have one area where you definitely all agree that should be the primary place, designate that as the primary place and then give staff some options for, you know, your second best option and then maybe your third so that if we do run into a situation like Councilor Berry suggests, that if we get more people showing up, we would have options for them to be. And hopefully some infrastructure in place at the time that we need to stand that up.
One of the things that I think, and I appreciate the mayor's comments so much because I think if we do a good job of designating space and hopefully people will congregate to those places and we will have less dispersion of people who are homeless and have maybe vehicles parked wherever, all over the city. And so when we talk about trying to bring, you know, not with the code, but in bringing services to the, you know, that might help that entire process. So I think, I think it's a good, I think it's a good thought to try and look at that. And if I'm thinking about this, I think the 8:00 PM time, given most of our months, I know that from the time from 8:00 to 10:00 in the summertime, while the city... I know that from the time from 8:00 to 10:00 in the summertime, while the City Hall parking lot is not likely to be a huge congregating area, I think it's, for the, for the larger portion of the, of the year, is a reasonable time. But I'm, I'm, that's, you know, that's just kind of the first thought.
Okay. Thank you. Should we go back to the time?
Yeah, I'm, one of the things that is, that we are very fortunate about is having this conversation, is we can be proactive in having these designated areas that when people do come to them, then we'll have eyes and be able to make, connect those connections that we've been discussing. So it's good that we're having this. So after this conversation, I, I think I've gotten a sense that council is generally in favor of parks staying closed at night. If I can knock out that question.
I think we were pretty, I don't think there was any alternative position offered.
I think parks and schools are off.
Yeah. Okay, so if there's additional thoughts, I, I hear Council President Ogravall's comment about the enforcement component, so I can bring that back if you want that feedback before we get into a specifics, a specific on this. But if you do have opinions about the, our range, I'm happy to take a note of that.
So did we, I mean, I guess, just to make sure we're ready to move off this slide, I think you, you got several comments and then you're doing more research, so you've got enough.
Yes, I have enough. I can move on.
Yeah, but if you have a preference on the time right now, because then we could go back and ground truth with Public Works and with the Police Department, if, if you have a preference there, it would be helpful for us to at least have that discussion.
Well, let me see if.
You don't have to be married to it.
If I was understanding everyone's comments, so it sounds like, to me, 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. or something along those lines.
That works for me.
Works in the place that we have described.
Yeah, I mean, I do know, for example, like, our, our Public Works staff, they, they get to work, or they start work earlier than 8:00 a.m.
But that's just what I.
So, and they park in the City Hall parking lot. So if you, if you're looking at, from an enforcement standpoint, of having people there, you know, and you want to look at an earlier timeframe, but I will ground truth that with the staff.
Given what you just said, I was thinking along the same lines. 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. gets anybody cleared out if they choose to leave and not use the 72 hours before people start really coming into work. So you don't have necessarily that.
Oh, instead of 8:00 to 8:00?
Yes.
Yes.
And I, I can live with that, too. I think that's very reasonable.
Good point. And I don't know how big of a ordeal it is to, to change, I see your note consistent with the WC 5.2.
It's already getting touched.
Okay, okay, I was gonna say, but.
It's already getting touched for other reasons.
It makes sense that they be in alignment.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're ready for policy question number something else.
Yeah. Number something else. I think.
Just another one.
So I, I would recommend that council prohibit camping in the SROZ, given the environmentally sensitive nature of that. Okay, I'm getting thumbs up, head nods, okay. One question that I wanted to bring up is we do have other area, other forested areas that are on city property that are not in our SROZ. And one of the particular questions that came up from staff was our heritage tree areas that are not in a city park. Most of them are in city parks, but we do have a couple that are not in city parks. They would be, we have a map, so it'd be pretty easy to identify them if there's a desire by council for the Wilsonville Heritage Tree map areas to also be excluded.
I'm really pleased you brought that up, because I do believe they, particularly after sitting and attending Charlotte Lehman's speech in her lecture series, the trees are such a valuable asset to our city. And the damage that can be done, whether it's vandalism or whatever, I strongly agree that we include those.
And I would, I would also, I'm just, sorry to sound like a broken record, but I, I just want to bring up that another reason that these, from a human well-being perspective, that if these are prohibited, these areas, from what we've learned from other efforts in other areas, such as all of those wooded areas around the city of Portland, where he said they have hundreds of encampments beyond what you see downtown, they cannot keep up with it, meaning they cannot bring services to those people. And they're many weeks or months or years away from beginning to move into something else. So I find it to be unhelpful for human well-being. And I think our plan of focusing it in these, this one area that we described and expanding it to a couple of backup areas as needed, knowing that we are, you know, that it would be, it would work best if we have a good collaboration with the service providers.
Yeah. The other questions I actually think are going to be better suited for when we get to the thought map exercise, like the footprint and the distance between, because that, those are being incorporated into that discussion. So I'm going to reserve that for the March 20th council meeting, when you get to look at code. But what I really, so what I want to spend these last few minutes talking with council about is what you want to see both from the March 20th meeting and then also moving forward with this. I've heard from Mayor Fitzgerald some discussion about, you know, this continued outreach. And if there are things that you're wanting to see within what I'm doing, even if it's not necessarily a fully formed program or something, but if there's other things that you want to see happening in, in alignment with this project, I'd like to hear that feedback now, so I can make sure that we're.
I think the mayor mentioned something about policy statements or.
Or value, I mean, I was just, because I realized it's not, that all can't be in your ordinance, or it's going to be like 75 pages. And those things probably don't live in an ordinance. But if we had, I mean, think of some other words, but I was thinking if we had a, a set of principles, maybe, principles around how we respond to persons who are experiencing homelessness in Wilsonville.
Right. Well, one of the things that, one of the things that we'll be doing as part of your adoption is, what some jurisdictions have done is they've adopted their findings right into their code. And to me, that is going to take up way too much space. So I'm going to have the findings provisions separate, that will be part of your ordinance that you'll be adopting. And as part of that, we could start out with value statements before you get into the findings.
So along those lines, if you have some themes or some areas that you'd like us to include in that, then you can give those directly to Amanda.
And I can, and I can also bring, if council's interested at, at the March 20th meeting, there are, so Bend and Medford, both of them, when they did theirs, they do have some, something along the lines of what it sounds like you're describing that I could easily bring as examples.
And there may be stuff that you picked up from the Clackamas County interactions that you want to include in those statements as well.
I'm kind of curious about communications, like how we're going to identify people that need this type of service. And then, I don't know if this is appropriate time where we also talk about enforcement, you know, like.
I think that's all.
Like, is this all volunteer part, you know, like, do they just show up at this site? Or how are they going to find out about the site that's available?
If they're camping in places they shouldn't be after you do your adoptions, then they will be directed to that site.
Because people are going to call in or?
If they see somebody illegally camp, I mean, that's typically what we get, is it's, it's all people calling the city saying there's someone camping, or maybe you've seen it on your walks around the community. We get that information, but having those areas designated by council, we'll be able to direct them to those spots. And more importantly, I think, to what the mayor's saying, is that the idea is to get these folks the help that they need to get out of the situation that they're currently in. So we would have Clackamas County would be able to come out to this one site and interact with those folks, in terms of what services they provide and offer.
So do we need to, like, write that second part down into what we're working on?
We can sure add it to our findings about, I think that's what the mayor's suggesting, is that we should articulate in whatever we're calling it, the findings or our principles or whatever, what we're trying to accomplish with our program here.
I like that.
And maybe this is, can you confirm that this is what you're saying? So we have our ordinance, we have findings. As the world changes, as, you know, what's the requirements or our situation or needs or whatever, as the world changes, we don't want to have to redo our ordinance again and again and again. So these findings are something separate that we can update much more easily, correct?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, the principles and stuff, that's not part of the code. If you're, if you're messing with the code, then that requires the same process we're going through now.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
I assume we would be learning things as we go, because none of us have ever done this before.
Exactly.
Although, one, one last thing, maybe City Manager Cosgrove, could, you could just describe a little bit about what our, I mean, currently, we, we do have our police officers and complaints officers talking with people they find and offering resources. It's just that we want to give them more tools.
Exactly, yeah. The Police Department has some donations that they get and they offer vouchers based on a specific set of circumstances to individuals. David interacts with folks that, David Valenzuela, our code enforcement, interacts with people in vehicles and also people that are tent camping in areas. So there is that ongoing dialogue with folks on a daily basis, so it'll just be a different conversation once we get these regulations in place.
Yeah, so this, one of the things, actually, Council President Ogravall kind of triggered in my mind is, one of the things that I have not recommended, but in particular Bend has done this, is had the ability to have administrative rules separate from, because administrative rules can update way more, way easier than code can. The problem from my perspective is then when you talk about knowing where you can go, and also from an enforcement perspective, when you have multiple places, you have to look for that information, it makes it more challenging. But, for example, like, one of the things I think about is the implementation of the alternatives. Is you could have that in administrative regulations of how that happens, right? Or if you, if you wanted to do something, like, one of the things that the mayor and I have discussed is, if somebody is cited and they get into the Coordinated Housing Access Program, that that is a way potentially for their citation to be dismissed. You wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily want to put that in code, but that could be something that's in administrative rules that you could update and much more easily. So if there's an appetite for that based on some of these programmatic kind of discussions we're having, that's something that we could do as well, that, that would go and coincide with it. And technically, we don't need to do that in the May timeframe, because those don't need the 30-day implementation. So even if they, they take a little bit longer to get done, as long as they're done in June, we could get them done. So if, if there's, I'm seeing head nods, so we can identify some things that maybe would be good for administrative rules as well.
Okay. Did we make some headway?
Yes, yes, a lot of productive headway. And I think, I think the March 20th meeting will be really informative as well.
Well, thank you for all your research and outreach, Ms. Gyle Hinman, and everybody for your comments. So I think that concludes our work session, right?
I think we're done, yes.
So we will adjourn the work session and reconvene at 7:05? Seven?
7:05.
Let's, 7:05, reconvene. Let's... 7:05, reconvene.
We've worked out measurable results on all of them. And I think we will have that completed by early April after we all take a look at it and work with the city staff to outline the measurable aspects of those goals. I'm going to leave out the details because it's similar to a lot of meetings, but I went to another C4 meeting that was two and a half hours talking about transportation and tolling. And ODOT does have a comment section open on their website now, and I would encourage people to look at that and make their comments. Senator Aaron Woods and Representative Neron have made it clear that they are working with ODOT to advance the requests they've heard from us and from the cities in their districts, one of which is to push for support for the idea that people living in Wilsonville, in the Charbonneau neighborhood, or wherever you live in Wilsonville, that you're not instigating a toll just to go back and forth in your city. There's a lot more to learn about this. I also attended a meeting of Meet the Mayors that was put on by an economic development group called Greater Portland, Inc., of which City of Wilsonville is a member. There were about a dozen other mayors, and each mayor shared some high-level thoughts of where they are going in the next two years and what are some of the priorities. And I would say one of the issues that we heard a lot about was how they will deal with homelessness, because all of the cities in Oregon are working to the deadline, which is by, I believe, June 30th, to complete an ordinance that aligns with the state goals to ensure that you have a time, manner, and place for people to sleep who are experiencing homelessness. That's a short description of it. We've had a lot of activity with the legislature. City of Wilsonville has some bills that we've wanted to, we've actually introduced with our representative and senator. And one of those bills, or a couple of them, are very active right now, one of which is Senate Bill 4. And I was able to testify in person on that bill, which was really interesting. They had an information session where the Joint Committee on Semiconductor Siting, that is the name of the committee that is handling Senate Bill 4, invited cities and entities in this area to provide input. They had invited the city of Hillsborough to provide their plan, which was quite a lengthy presentation with a lot of good detail and maps. The City of Wilsonville had already sent a letter. And I was given two minutes, along with all the other people who testified after Hillsborough gave their information session, to really give the highlights to our testimony, which was that the City of Wilsonville has requested to not be named in Section 10 of Senate Bill 4, along with several other cities that were named there, because we believe what happens in Section 10 is that is a section of the bill that enables the governor to cite a semiconductor plant at some time in the future in a place that would be outside of an urban growth boundary. And so in our testimony, we outlined that our urban growth boundary has upwards of 500 acres and more already zoned for industrial development. And Wilsonville and other cities have quite a bit of acreage that they would like to be considered for development of industries, which could include semiconductors or related industries in those industrial areas, before there is something done outside of our process to install a significant change to the way our city works if they were to cite a semiconductor plant on French Prairie. We were surprised that the Clackamas County Commission came to the committee the next day, and Chair Smith announced that the Clackamas County Commission unanimously supported the idea of citing a semiconductor plant on the land just south of I-5 in what we call the French Prairie, which is some of the richest farmland in the state of Oregon. So we just then decided it was important to send a second letter to the committee for Senate Bill 4 clarifying that Wilsonville is very pro-business. We have 27,000 residents, 20,000 employees working in our city, and we have a private sector payroll of $1.5 billion, and we have more than 500 acres available for industrial development. And that's where we want to work with the state to develop our workforce. We also want to maintain the important economic value of the rich farmland south of the Willamette Valley, which is significant economically, both in our state and region and globally. You can read more about that by going on the Oregon Legislature site, OLIS, and looking up Senate Bill 4, and you can read the letters of testimony that have been submitted. Our city's economic development manager also testified at the legislature recently on House Bill 2663, and that goes along with what we've been saying about our industrial area. That bill is developed around asking the state to extend and fund the Business Oregon State Regional Significant Industrial Siting Program. And it would give cities like Wilsonville the money needed to install the infrastructure in industrial lands. What a lot of people don't know is that when a developer is looking at investing money in real estate, one of the least expensive ways they can begin to develop land and so forth is residential or commercial. Industrial is slower to make a profit for developers, and so that's why it is harder to make that happen. In order to have the kind of high-wage jobs that Wilsonville is known for and that our state wants, we need to find a way to make that industrial land available within our cities. So that's what that bill is about. And last thing I will say, sorry this has been such a long report, is that we had a legislative town hall here on Saturday. Senator Aaron Woods of District 13, who also lives in Wilsonville, and Representative Courtney Neron of House District 26, who lives in Wilsonville. I don't know that we've ever had both of those positions residing in Wilsonville, but they held one of their town houses, their town halls, here in City Hall chambers. And we had 50 or more people, we had standing room only, and the program lasted for an hour. People could submit their questions, and the main questions revolve, we had some questions about, some topics around education, around industrial land, and also around the bill that City of Wilsonville has put forward to ask the state of Oregon to study extending our commuter rail west from Wilsonville all the way to Salem. Representative Neron is the chief sponsor of that bill, and we have seen a lot of support for it from cities across the way. And Senator Aaron Woods has been very active in representing Wilsonville's interests in the West-Salem bill, and he has 16 bills that he is working on directly. And we appreciate his representation of Wilsonville's interests with regard to tolling, transportation, broadband, and other areas. Coming up, there is a League of Oregon Cities Regional Meeting in March that there should be about 50 elected officials and staff from the Portland area together to hear legislative updates and discuss key issues that maybe we all have a common interest in. Lastly, our next meeting of the city council is scheduled for Monday, March 20th, at 7:00 PM here in City Hall. Do we have anyone presenting on the communications segment?
Anybody virtually?
Dan Polly for Communications, not Citizen Input. So we are ready for your report. And this is going to be a report from Mr. Polly on climate-friendly and equitable communities overview. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to be with you again. Let me share my screen here. So in effort to, so in way of background, the effort to address climate change in March 2020, former Governor Brown signed an executive order that directs state agencies to prioritize rulemaking related to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The Department of State, the Department of Land Conservation Development, or DLCD, branded their rulemaking, which was done in concert with ODOT and others, as Climate-Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CFEC, adopting rules in July of 2022. These adopted CFEC rules directly impact the City of Wilsonville and its policies and work program in a number of ways. So my purpose tonight is to briefly introduce council to the impact both on city policy and the community development department's work program in the coming years. And myself and other CD staff will be back for a number of work sessions and subsequent adoption hearings over the coming months and years. But for tonight, I just wanted to give an introductory overview. So the rulemaking focused on land use and transportation. This includes reducing travel demand and development supportive of less driving, reforming parking management to disincentivize driving and parking, providing infrastructure to support electric vehicles, placing additional focus on infrastructure for multimodal transportation, shifting the focus of decisions away from motor vehicle congestion, and prioritizing transportation projects supportive of climate and equity outcomes. So one major component of the state rules is for local jurisdictions to identify climate-friendly areas to encourage development. This is a major work program for many jurisdictions outside the Portland metro region. However, within metro, existing Metro 2040 centers, including Wilsonville's Town Center, are considered the climate-friendly areas. The city is on the right track in this area. The new Wilsonville Town Center plan adopted in 2019 and related implementing policies are consistent with the policies adopted for CFEC for climate-friendly areas. Based on its status as a climate-friendly area, there will be continued interest from a regional state policy perspective to encourage a variety of uses in multimodal transportation infrastructure and Town Center. So another major component is parking reform. And there are two deadlines or phases in these changes. The first rule actually took effect the beginning of this year, and these rules override any contrary city code. The city has not yet updated the development code to reflect these rules, but state staff anticipates doing so with the second phase of parking management required by the rules, which I'll cover here in a minute. And the interim staff has prepared guidelines for development applicants and other interested parties so they can understand how the state rules overrule adopted city codes. Specifically, the rules now in effect mean that there's no vehicle parking mandates or minimum parking requirements within one-half mile of frequent transit corridors and three-quarter miles of passenger rail stations. In Wilsonville, this means Smart Routes 4, the crosstown route, and 2X are the routes that are considered frequent for the purpose of this rule. The West Station qualifies, of course, as a passenger rail station. Proximity to these bus routes or the West Station exempts much of the city from vehicle parking minimums currently listed in the city's development code. Notably, the exempt areas include Town Center and Frog Pond West, East, and South. In these areas, the market then will be the determining factor of how much parking to provide. Because of the broad impact of the transit proximity rule in Wilsonville, the other parking-related rules that took effect January 1st have limited impact. But for those limited areas, including Charbonneau and western portions of Bilbo and portions of the northwest industrial area, the following additional exemptions apply. First, the city cannot require any more than one parking space for any residential units. The city generally is already in compliance with this provision. However, multifamily housing or apartments with 10 or more units require between one and a quarter, one and three-quarters spaces per unit in the city code. The state rules reduce this all to one. However, as I said, we don't anticipate much multifamily development outside the areas that are already exempt under the transit proximity rules. The rules also establish that there are no minimum parking requirements for shelters, certain small residential units, affordable housing, as defined by the state, childcare, or facilities for people with disabilities. So I know this probably doesn't show best on this slide, but this shows the extent that the transit proximity rules, again notably this includes Town Center and Frog Pond. So the next phase of parking is due by June of this year. However, as allowed under the rules, the city has requested the deadline be moved out 24 months to the middle of 2025 in recognition of other work program, things that we're working on for the state, such as the housing capacity analysis and other state mandated deadlines. State has not yet confirmed acceptance of this extension request, but will update council as we hear from them. So we may complete the work sooner than 2025, depending on the compliance options the city eventually decides to pursue. So that said, the second phase provides three options, or almost two and a half options, I would say, for parking reform. The first option would be to repeal all vehicle parking minimums citywide. This may be the cleanest path for the city, especially with the majority of the city already exempt under the transit proximity rule, language discussed a moment ago. Either Option 2 or 3 first require the city to adopt eight new regulations from the state menu to reduce, quote, "reduce parking mandates." These include such things as shared parking, changing the distance allowed between parking and a use, unbundling leasing parking from leasing apartments, greater allowance for on-street parking to count as required parking. In addition to that, the city must choose to either adopt further unbundling policies, meaning both residential, commercial, and employment uses must consider leasing and provision of parking separate from the primary use, or choose to minimize or remove parking requirements for further 15 development types, along with related parking reforms, like implementing parking, more parking maximums. So I'll move on from parking to another, something else going into effect here soon is electric being electric vehicle-ready, which will also preempt any contrary city standards. This rule requires multifamily development of five or more units and mixed-use residential developments to have 40% of parking spaces electric vehicle or EV-ready. EV-ready entails designating the location of charging spaces and installing conduit to serve the spaces. Existing state code and statute already requires 20% of commercial lots to be EV-ready. On top of this rule going into effect, the city will need to then incorporate all of this into future code updates. So lastly, I will talk about the changes to transportation planning and project prioritization, which is another big component of the CFEC rules. Details with the state and metro on timing and impact are still being worked out. However, the following is staff's current understanding of likely significant impacts of the CFEC rules on the city-related transportation, particularly policies related to vehicular traffic. First, the city will need to change how it measures transportation performance for land use decisions. The city's longstanding method of measuring intersection level of service with each new development will be phased out in favor of a volume-to-capacity measure and vehicles' miles traveled. The city will need to ensure all land use decisions do not increase the amount of per-capita driving, measured as per-capita vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. The city needs to update its transportation model and audit its development code for compliance with these. Second, when the city plans future transportation projects, it will also need to put additional weight towards multimodal needs prioritizing transportation projects. Future decisions on transportation funding on the local, regional, and state level will be more focused on multimodal transportation and other climate focus and equity indicators. So what this means for a community developments work program in the coming years related transportation is needing to update the city's transportation model and traffic reports to assess vehicle miles traveled and inform decision-making on all these new measures. We have been and will continue to participate in the metro regional transportation plan update, which will be integrating these policies as well and updating, as well as being involved in updating the region's climate smart strategy. This will then inform the city as we update our local transportation model and project prioritization. From there, we'll adopt a series of new transportation performance measures that prioritize multimodal transportation, as well as the climate and equity measures. And then we'll need to update the city's transportation system plan and development code to incorporate these and other related changes. So quick timeline then of what this looks like with, on top of all the cities doing for housing, economic development, and other priorities. First of all, as mentioned before, the city has requested but not received confirmation from DLCD on alternative deadlines to better line with staff availability and other work program items. Major deadline change the city requested, as mentioned, is for the Phase 2 of parking. This will have, I mean, part of that is because of what's already been accomplished by Phase 1 parking, and also we want to time it better with the work we're doing and staff availability as we work on the housing work mandated by the state, as well as our transportation model update. The requested deadline for the transportation performance measure seeks to better line with the city's TSP, Transportation System Plan update, as well as having helpful information already at hand from the city's housing prediction, production strategy, and economic opportunities analysis work that we're already planning coming up. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time. We hope to coordinate this work with our other work, have great dialogue with you and the community, create the best outcomes for the Wilsonville community. We look forward to working with you as on each of these topics in the coming months and years. Should you have any questions, please reach out to me or other appropriate staff, and we're happy to bring forward more focused work sessions as appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. And we have three councillors wanting to ask questions, and I will call on them in order of their question, starting with Council President Ogrvall.
Thank you. I'm hopeful that you can perhaps go back to that slide where we're looking at the map showing the exempt transit proximity area for parking. Yes, just because I know we're trying to cover a large geographic area, so it's a smaller map. But maybe, can you explain this? So we see a number of circles here, and we're all somewhat familiar with what might be inside the circle and outside of the circle. Can you explain the distinction between that? What?
So what's inside, so essentially what this is, is a buffer around the line 4 and the line 2X is most the shaded area, as well as the blue circle is three-quarter mile around the smart central or the west. So anything within that shaded area or within the blue circle do not have parking minimums as of the beginning of this year.
And then at the very beginning of the presentation, you were mentioning that Town Center, so Town Center falls within the shaded area.
Yes.
Is part of that area, which would be the, what was the phrase or the designation?
Climate-friendly area.
Climate-friendly area. So anything, again, anything that's inside these circles or shaded area does not have the parking minimum.
Correct.
Okay. And that would include our climate-friendly area of Town Center?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dunwell?
Dan, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm sure that you're much more familiar with the executive order than I am. So can you explain to me the, does this executive order, is there any discussion about potentially modifying it under our new state leadership, or do you believe that it will stand as written?
I have not heard any talk of Governor Kotek changing this executive order.
I'm particularly concerned about the EV requirements in multifamily housing. Just for conversation with the rest of council, that, does that apply within that circle?
So any parking that is provided, it would apply?
Any parking that, so in any multifamily housing?
For new development, though.
Or new development would require, so for instance, the location near the West Station that we're talking about, the TOD, would that also require EV, a certain percentage of EV stations?
I'm not familiar with any exemptions that would apply there, so, as far as I know, yes.
And for the record, electric vehicles are, the cost has not come down. Individuals who are in a housing similar to what will have in place in the TOD are the least likely to be able to afford an electric vehicle, and to have parking and the cost committed to that doesn't seem to quite square. And I'm concerned about the burden on these individuals who are now becoming, are told to become much more dependent on either electrical vehicles or public transportation because of some of the parking requirements that are being in place. If we blend it all together, I know that you can't do anything about this, and I know that we have to abide by the executive order, but if you could at least keep your ear to the ground about any conversations that go on as this comes into greater conversation, particularly with some of our marginalized communities.
Is that somewhat mitigated by the no parking requirements for the TOD development in the?
Correct. There's no parking requirements. And also, I mean, it's putting in conduit. You don't actually have to install the charging stations. It's essentially installing conduit.
Oh, okay.
So there's the possibility of putting in the EV stations in the future.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Berry?
So my question also had to do with the electric vehicles. So it looked like on one of the charts that March 2023, that 40% were going to be required to be electric vehicle in multifamily, but that must be for new construction, not for existing.
Correct.
So what about existing multifamily? Are they grandfathered in, or will there be new regulations?
That's my understanding. And exactly, I don't know if it's been entirely sorted, if there's a major remodel or something like that, at what point that'd be triggered. But I know there's some questions with, even with our building department about exactly the implementation here. But overall, generally speaking, existing would be grandfathered in and not subject. This is just for new development at this point.
So as a quick follow-up, so will the, is there a mechanism to encourage multifamily developments to have charging stations available?
Not, to my knowledge, that we've discussed as a city at this point.
There's no, I think, are you asking for, are there any, like, programs out there to fund, like state programs?
Or if the city was going to have some kind of regulation saying you need to have, if you have 300 housing units, you need to have three charging stations, or something like that?
We don't, no, we're not contemplating. And there might be some legal issues with requiring somebody to install that now because it wasn't part of their conditions of approval for developing that site.
But when they remodel?
Potentially, I don't know. I think, I think that would be more of a legal question in terms of what we can and can't require. It's not like if non-conforming use burns down, it can't ever come back. I think it's a little different situation than something like that. Complicated question.
Yeah, but we do have a big population that lives in multifamily.
We do.
And they should have access to charging stations, too, besides having to drive to the library.
And it's possible that the market may dictate some of that, that you might start seeing some retrofit of parking lots to allow it. Just because if you're excluding people that drive EVs, you're limiting your market, so there might be some market realities there for folks as well.
That's a good point.
Great questions. All right. Thank you, Mr. Polly.
Thank you.
I was telling Dan that we do have a council goal related to this, so this will dovetail nicely into that.
Well, I was thinking that there, I mean, I'm no expert on all the options that are out there, but I remember that then Mayor Gamba of Milwaukee, who's now a state representative, is really keen on is really keen on, I think he had a bill he was introducing last session, and maybe it's in place this year, that would make used electric vehicles, change some kind of regulation so it's easier to sell used vehicles, and maybe some kind of, I think it was a rebate when you buy a used vehicle, instead of only for new vehicles. And I don't know if that got in, but that's, those are some ideas. And maybe, maybe we would want to find a way to get some charging stations put in. Before we leave this section, Councillor Linville, does you want to comment?
No, Your Honor, I don't, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes this section and brings us to the citizen input and community announcements. We don't have anyone here today for that, so we'll go right into councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements from our council, starting with Council President Ockervall.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, as the mayor mentioned, I was able to join some of those tours and meetings with our Wilsonville employers, as well as when we were able to gather with both the federal level, state level, and local level elected leaders. And that was a really special opportunity to kind of show off our community to all of those people. So I was very excited to be part of that. But talking specifically about some of the pieces we learned from the employers, from Cisco and from DW Fritz, which we were able to visit with most recently. I was really impressed with the opportunities at Wilsonville companies, those opportunities for employment, which the mayor has already detailed some of that, different plans that they have for building workforce, for looking at employee retention as well. And also, I was impressed with the innovation that's happening at these companies, really felt like we're pushing the edge of possibility in an exciting way, and definitely felt their interest in our community, too. So, something to keep in mind, if you are perhaps, you know, we're very aware of our community profile, and people that live in Wilsonville often end up working outside of Wilsonville. So if you are sitting on I-5, wondering about opportunities that are here in Wilsonville that may not require such a commute, there are some exciting things happening inside our city. So, that was very cool to see, and I look forward to learning more, both from those employers, but also from other employers in our city, both large and small. Looking ahead, the mayor and I will be attending the Equity Summit, which is going to be hosted by the Westland-Wilsonville School District, an event happening this weekend, on Saturday, bringing together community members from all different types of roles in Wilsonville and in Westland, since we share a school district together. And specifically, the mayor will be presenting on a equitable housing in Wilsonville discussion workshop, or breakout, I guess it's called, a breakout room? Yes, together we'll be talking about some of the housing, things that we have in place in Wilsonville, and having that dialogue with our community members. And I look forward to that. I was able to attend the Equity Summit a few years ago. We've had both virtual events and in-person events prior to the pandemic, so it'll be an exciting opportunity to gather as a community and learn from each other. Also, in the theme of housing, I am interested in touring some of our subsidized housing in Wilsonville. And I've communicated this to our city manager and to our mayor. And so I look forward to hearing more about that in the weeks ahead. I think it's a beneficial opportunity for me and perhaps other council members, so.
Did you go on the last one?
I did not. I believe the last one was perhaps like five or six years ago, so it's been a while.
I think it was a request from then-councillor Starr, organized through Barbara Jacobson.
Okay.
So, I'm not trying to throw it on a man.
But he just turned and looked at you.
I won't do that, because I throw a lot at her already. But we will figure out how to organize that, and if you're interested, we'll have to figure out dates that'll work for all of you. I'm assuming that we would do it all at once, offer that tour up. So, yes, we can help facilitate that.
That sounds excellent.
Okay.
And that is it for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Berry.
Thank you. I feel like it's been really busy, and learning so much, joining the city council so recently, just in January. But I also was able to join the tour of the city with the Congresswoman and with Senator Woods, and that was really interesting. And then stopping at DW Fritz and getting to chat with them and hear about what they see as employment opportunities and problems they'd like to overcome. It's really good to have those conversations and dialogues ongoing. We had the council retreat on Friday evening and Saturday. I attended this Metro C4 meeting on transportation with Julie. Upcoming, tomorrow night, I'm attending the LOC Public Budgeting 101 Training. So I get to learn about preparing our city council budget and maybe getting some good tools on that. Then on Wednesday, February 15th, I have the Metro C4 Subcommittee Meeting, so I'm interested in that. It was, I was really impressed with how the city came together, where the city mayor was able to speak on the Senate Bill Number Four for the semiconductor siting, and how all the council people participated in the letter campaign, so that the legislators can hear our voice. And I think we all had one voice stating pretty much the same. So that was really, really impressive. And then there's a, on Friday evening, this Friday evening, is it all day, from 11:00 to 7:00 p.m.? And then Saturday, the next day, from 9:30 to 4:00 p.m., Wilsonville Robotics Team is competing in a regional tournament at Wilsonville High School. There's no admission, so it'd be really great if we could all go and support our future engineers and C-coders in action. So, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Councillor Dunwell.
Thank you, Mayor. I, as a member, our representative on the French Prairie Forum, I, we are all paying very, I, in particular, and the rest of council, obviously, are paying very close attention to Senate Bill Four. And I would like to thank the citizens of Wilsonville and the surrounding communities for their active and vocal testimony, and also thank the mayor for her testimony and the follow-on letter. It's very important to the future of Wilsonville, to the future of Charbonneau. And so I would encourage all of the citizens to also watch that very carefully, because it will have an impact on all of us if we do not see the amendments make it through that we're, that we're asking. I also attended the DEI Lecture Series, Lecture Number One, and it was presented by Zachary Stocks, and it was "Displacing Black Portland: A History of Housing." Very intriguing, very interesting. He actually lives in Astoria, and he's with the Black Pioneers. And he spoke, it was so interesting to hear about how the black community came into Oregon, some of the challenges they had, and also a lengthy discussion about Vamport. If you don't know about Vamport, Google it, because it's quite an interesting story and time about Oregon and the city of the entire metro area now during the Second World War. So I encourage all citizens to attend the future there every month, April, May, June, and July. The one thing that I would encourage the DEI Committee to also consider is their, seeing the success of these, and very well-attended, by the way, is to also in future have some lectures regarding our Hispanic community. 14% of our community is Hispanic, but also speak to some of our own tribal and indigenous citizens, because there is a significant contribution that we all make into our city and into the state of Oregon, and not just in the past, but also today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dunwell. And I just want to reconfirm how really helpful it was to have not only every member of our council speaking on Senate Bill Four, but also a number of citizens. And Councillor Linville, I went out of order, I'm sorry. Would you please make your comments?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to follow in your footsteps and really help to raise the red flag about Senate Bill Four. I, I think it's a, we were really, I think, fortunate to have your response, to have the other, my colleagues as councillors, to respond, and citizens as well. I don't think we're out of the woods on this yet, and I, I think we really need to have some direct communication with Governor Kotek about what the impact might be should this pass, and she have the ability to change the urban growth boundaries at her discretion, and what that might mean to the city of Wilsonville. So, as we kind of continue, I'm hoping that we will continue to communicate what the message is and, and keep the, keep the communication going with our, both our representatives, our senators, and with the governor's office. The, I don't have meetings that I attended between our last meeting and this meeting outside of our, our planning session and our goal-setting session, but I just wanted to forward my thanks again to our city leadership and our, the staff, directors, and leaders of the departments who worked with the council. It was a long day, and their contribution to our work and collaboration was really incredible. So, thank you, my thank you to all of them. I was contacted by Sandy Carter about the, about the position that former councillor Leehan holds on the Lamont Falls Locks Authority. And I need to contact her back. Councillor, former councillor Leehan is proposing that perhaps it might be better to have someone from the current city council sitting on that locks authority. But I would like to ask the, to ask the mayor, the city manager, and our city attorney to meet with me about that before I respond back to Sandy Carter, because I, I think the position on the locks authority is, is very different from our council position. And whether, whether it's advisable for us to have a councillor on that locks authority, I think we need to discuss that in advance. I will be attending the Greater Portland Inc. Small Cities Consortium meeting on March 16th, and there are just a couple of things that I wanted to just bring to the attention of our citizens. The Best in Wilsonville Photo Contest is open until March 11th, so that's right front and center on our city website. And my guess is we have some incredible photographers, and given the diversity of our weather, we probably have some great photos that could be submitted. I also wanted to just remind folks that there are some great topics that are on the Wilsonville Ready website as well, that's on our city website, but preparations both for weather and for getting your pets ready for emergencies, there's a, there's a number of great topics. And then on March 18th, there's going to be an open house at the Steinbuser Barn from, that's a Saturday, on the 18th, from 1:00 to 3:30. And that is an incredible venue that a lot of our citizens don't know that much about. So I would encourage folks to go down. It's just a free open house, and I see on a number of places where people are looking for venues, or wedding receptions, or for other kinds of parties and events, and that's a great spot. So I would encourage people to, to attend that. So, that is my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Linville, and I appreciate your comments about the goal-setting. We all, I concur, thank you to our city manager and all of our staff for their work on that.
And Councillor Linville, could you just shoot us some, some dates for your availability so I can coordinate with the mayor and Ms. Guile-Himman on that meeting that you suggested? If you could just tell us some dates next week that you're available?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I can do, I'll do that.
Okay.
I would like, I would like to also mention that with Council President Ockervall, I'm interested in that tour as well, but physically won't be available to do that until the end of the month.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And, thank you. So that brings us to our consent agenda. If the city attorney would please take a deep breath, because it's going to be a long reading.
You got time for a nap during this?
Yeah, thank you.
Resolution Number 3040, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.542 to ORS 307.548 for Autumn Park Apartments, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution Number 3041, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Charleston Apartments, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution Number 3042, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.542 to ORS 307.548 for Creekside Woods LP, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. Resolution Number 3043, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Rain Garden Limited Partnership, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Corita's Community Housing Corporation. Ors number, Resolution Number 3044, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville granting an exemption from property taxes under ORS 307.540 to ORS 307.548 for Waiteman Park, a low-income apartment development owned and operated by Accessible Living, Inc. Resolution Number 3048, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville supporting a 2023 grant application to the Oregon State Parks Local Government Grant Program for the Boons Ferry Restroom Replacement Project. And Resolution Number 3049, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the purchase of one 40-foot bucket truck from Global Rental Co.
Thank you. Having heard the consent agenda and having read the detail in the package that was provided to the council, I would like to ask Council President Ockervall for a motion.
Yes, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? The motion's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. And that brings us to city managers' business.
If you will just indulge me this one time.
Please.
We ran across something so cool that you just have to see it, so I'm not even going to try to describe it.
What is it?
It's a video.
Okay.
From the 80s, that's all I'm going to say. And it's not, it's not MTV, so it's not dance videos or anything. And it's not MTV, so it's not dance videos or anything like that, but I think you will enjoy this a lot, so...
Great.
Base 1 to 08 Bravo, cleared for liftoff to Wilsonville, Oregon. Looks like a great day to be out touring.
08 Bravo to Base 1. Roger, it's a beautiful day for flying.
Somewhere near Portland. Actually, there's no secret about Wilsonville. It's a vigorous and prosperous city located just a little south of Portland on Interstate 5 with excellent access to freeways and transportation, plenty of available land, lots of opportunity to grow in an orderly way. Best of all, Wilsonville is a forward-looking city where people and nature live and work in harmony, nurturing each other. A city good for family living with schools, churches, and parks. A city to live in, to work in, to play in, away from big city noise and confusion. That's why Wilsonville today is acclaimed as a model city. That's why there's a lot growing on in Wilsonville. This explains why several blue-ribbon American corporations are locating in Wilsonville. People like Tektronix, Nike, Payless Northwest, G.I. Joe's, WNI Trucking, St. Clair Pacwell, and Hewlett-Packard and McKesson Drug Company. People who know what they want and know they've found it at Wilsonville. Why do these major corporations and many others look specifically to Wilsonville? Well, one big reason is the excellent access. Interstate 5 runs north and south, bisecting the city's industrial areas with frequent overpasses and interchanges, leading to wide, well-paved access streets. And the city is fully served by rail, too. Yet with all its open land and semi-rural environment, Wilsonville is just 20 minutes south of Portland on Interstate 5 and just two minutes from I-205 with its access to Portland International Airport, Washington State, and Eastern Oregon. 30 minutes to the state capital of Salem with Eugene and all of the Willamette Valley at the doorstep. And Wilsonville is Oregon's natural gateway city to the high-tech Silicon Forest industries of western Oregon with the Oregon coast beyond. Another big reason why major distribution centers locate in Wilsonville is the ready availability of land, utilities and streets already in or underway. Such major developments as Parkway Center, Olin Industrial Park, and Edwards Industrial Park. Tektronix is one of a number of modern clean assembly plants with other high-tech firms G.I. Joe's chose Wilsonville for its corporate headquarters and main distribution center. Nike will locate its world headquarters in this city plus a 600,000-square-foot distribution center. All this development is made possible by a contemporary and benevolent city government structure. Active citizen committees work with city officials to create a harmonious interaction between government and entrepreneurs, planning the city's future as a major distribution and industrial center. As a result, Wilsonville is being hailed as a model city in all of Oregon for government and private cooperation. A prime example of this private and public cooperation is the new Beckman Bridge construction project made possible through local improvement district bonds. But beyond the world of commerce, the citizens of Wilsonville envision their city as a haven for people. A new town center is providing a focus for retail and service facilities. Well-laid-out residential neighborhoods are blossoming with winding streets and ornamental native greenery, multiple family units, too. All with that relaxed, away-from-the-big-city atmosphere and plenty of land to continue to build beautiful homes with the same countryfied surroundings. A special part of Wilsonville is the Charbonneau Residential Area, a planned development with the finest luxury homes and supporting services. Charbonneau boasts its own boat dock, tennis courts, and a 27-hole golf course, one of two excellent courses in the area. The Portland Home Builders Association selected Charbonneau for their suite-of-dream showcase of homes, all superb luxury residences. With all its growth, Wilsonville remains a sanctuary of unspoiled natural charm. Pleasure boating, fishing, water skiing on the picturesque Willamette River, hiking, horseback riding. Wilsonville City Park extends 70 acres along the river, the largest park on the entire Willamette with a multitude of recreational opportunities. This is Wilsonville, Oregon, just south of metropolitan Portland, centrally located with superb access in every direction, a first choice of blue-ribbon corporations with plenty of room to grow, a congenial climate of local government, and set in an area of unspoiled natural beauty. If you'd like to know more about Wilsonville and the opportunities for you and your business, just write to Economic Development, Box 111, Wilsonville, Oregon, 97070.
Base 1 to 08 Bravo, I was flying up there, over.
Hey, it's beautiful up here, over.
Roger, are you returning to base, over?
Negative, I think I'll stick around, Wilsonville, for a while, over.
Roger, sounds good. Base 1 out.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to live there. I wonder if they strategically secured the PO Box 111. You know, it's number one.
I know, we have that now, right?
Very good. Do we still have that PO box?
No, I don't.
Have you checked it lately?
Check to see if we still...
Maybe check, maybe check the mail. Well, thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Might ask, you could send that on to the semiconductor siting committee. You might want to look at that.
Exactly what popped in your mind.
We've got that land right in the urban growth boundary and we want to protect our firm land. So thank you for sharing that.
For allowing it.
Wherever it was found. And, okay, great.
Show me and then my council has to see that.
That's great. That was a lot of fun. And so, Mr. Cosgrove, could you, could you just, I just want to, again, since it's still city manager report, thank you for leading our staff, our council retreat, which took a lot of preparation, day and a half, and now we have some next steps. Maybe just, could you describe how we're going to go forward?
Yeah, we typically take what we heard and then we go back and say, I think this is what we heard, so let's get it on paper in terms of what the goals were that you articulated, put some action items to them, and then bring that back to you and then ground-truth them with you. And then, once you say yes, you adopt them.
And is, when we do that, if there are any, I just remember this from the past and we talked about it a little bit, I haven't seen the draft yet, but somebody might say, gee, I was thinking this one, you know, if you see something that's missing or that you discussed that didn't make it forward, can the, how can the councilors deal with that?
They're not final until you adopt them.
Okay.
So the whole entire universe of what you could do is up to you because you're the five members that make that decision. So if somebody comes back and says, gosh, I really missed an opportunity to add this goal or that goal, you can all amend as you wish and so until you approve them, it's not final.
Okay.
There is, there was the one goal about the facilities and parks that I think everybody was frustrated on and I talked to the mayor about this earlier today. It's like, it's, I think there's so much information that you needed to have to have that discussion that it was frustrating in the moment to not be able to have that information at your fingertips. So one thing I talked about with the mayor and I think Councilor Akval earlier today is, maybe we bring that information to you first on the March 20th meeting because I mentioned in the goal-setting that I have it on my desk and it's there. We're just updating the numbers and everything because it's like a year and a half old. So my intention is to add that to the March 20th agenda so that when you come to the April meeting, the first meeting in April, and you have the goals, you'll at least have the information on the unfunded stuff for facilities and parks.
Which would be the whole scope of...
The whole scope of it, yeah. Because, just because we live in that world and we know that it's been talked about for six years, we have two new elected officials and I don't think Councilor Linville was part of that discussion. I could be mistaken. I don't think she's shaking her head no. And, you know, the mayor's new-ish. When she was on council, there was no parks and facility stuff, I don't think, as part of the goal. So I think Councilor Akval's the only one that's been here across that spectrum. So if you're amenable to that, let me do that, make that amendment, and then we'll bring the goals to you at the first meeting in April, if that sounds good. Okay.
Okay, I'm seeing nodding. Thank you very much. And another thing that I was reminded of that I'd like to see if we could, if you could ask our library director to see what she might recommend regarding the miniature art show that is underway at the library. And if you go to the library in the lobby, you know, we had, she had an activity of, I think it was a three-by-three-inch canvas, and there are some beautiful things that people entered. You've got the adult section and the grade nine through 12. But I'd love to just, when it's over, however that works, if she could make a little presentation because great diversity of art.
Could you have her like, maybe just like put together some slides of the artwork that, and we can queue that up? Yeah, we can do that.
And then in the meantime, if you're over at the library, take a look. It's a lot of fun and so I really appreciate that. Is there any legal business?
None tonight, Mayor.
Well, thanks for our very active city attorney. We gave you a lot of stage time today, but luckily it was for good things.
Yeah.
That brings us to the conclusion of our meeting, adjourning at 8:16 p.m.
Thank you.
Goodbye.